The chairman had the auditor.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Chairman, I'm ready. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, then, uh. I had budgeted eight hundred and seventy-five thousand for new motor graders. Came in at like seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, so I got about a hundred thousand. Spend on equipment there. That would include twenty-four thousand for the truck we just bought. I'm looking into buying a new skid steer. It's gonna be a hundred, a hundred thousand, so I wouldn't have to go through the whole bid process. I just need to call three companies and get quotes. So I guess I'd like permission to go ahead and pursue getting those quotes. I'll probably do Butler, REO, and Baca.
You have one now, you have a Baca now?
No. We have a Baca now. Uh, it's got tires, we'd probably look at one with tracks.
How old is it?
Eleven-four? But it's very low hours. Don't keep it, have two of them, so we got one with tires, one with tracks.
Did, did something come up or change that we didn't have it in the original budget?
Okay, ask me. Well, I was thinking about doing it next year. This skid steer.
You just, you just have the additional dollars that are sitting there, so.
Right.
Yeah, we should up here.
That's fine.
Also, the sixteen thousand dollar trailer?
That I got on a different line. I also line for the pickup that we're buying. And rakes for the motor graders. I thought I can, I paid for the side dump out of that.
It all comes from.
Yeah.
Spots.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to allow Kevin to go look for base for that.
I'll second.
Okay. Your motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion's carried.
So now, last thing I have is the year-end report. So this big report here, we're probably having a two-hundred chance to look at it, but. It's a lot of information I digest at once, but. I guess I'd just ask for again a question is more amazing.
You think we should be looking at?
Um, I always look at the very last column and see what that piece of equipment has cost us per hour, per mile. Look for the high ones. You know, either maybe we should think about getting rid of the high ones or something like that. Right now, the only one that really jumps out is that, uh, we got a little sand spreader that all we use it for is crack sealant, a second proof. Use it for crack sealant, for sand. And then for the hot, our, our main sander got a breakdown, we use it for breakdown also. So it doesn't get a lot of hours on it, is why the cost is so high. You still pay the insurance and.
We used it this year though, right?
We did use it this year, yes.
A lot.
And we certainly did for, um, crack sealant. But now this new truck and that's gonna be here this week, this new truck gets a, gonna replace this little, it's a single axle four-wheel drive sand spreader. It doesn't have, it's got a sand spread box on it.
So before we think about getting rid of it, maybe we should see how it goes. If it's a season at least, we could get a bad ice like we did this year.
Yep. You know, we'll hang onto it for another year just to get it worked into the system or that type of thing, you know? Other than that, I don't think anything anyway. First two pages, that's why I think it jumps out a bit.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Just, just out of curiosity, when I was looking at it, the cutting edges cost on the door blades is way more, is it just because the, we're using, is it a different style of cutting edge? So it's costing more, or do they just go through more, or?
They need to do more.
They just went through more?
Yep.
Cause I just noticed that this, like, almost on, like, the one on Devil's Lake, it's three times the cost on cutting edges versus like the one in Penner or Webster. And they're doing similar miles, so I was just kinda curious, maybe it, it just depends on road condition and stuff like that too, obviously, but.
Cutting edge really depends on the operator. How far you stick them in the ground.
Yeah, depends on how much you're going there too. Not like it's a big deal, but these aren't hard.
Oh, dry as too.
Yeah.
They're not the hardened ones, right?
No, these are the ones that got the, uh, looks like a screen, you know, the, the screen looking mesh that they flip them around so they wear evenly. Then this third page is the, uh, whole. And I guess there will really nothing jumps up. You look at the big numbers there and it's, they probably had some kind of a project, like a crack sealant project or a culvert replacement project.
Not to kill the horse on the cutting, but are we gonna have enough for next year to reorder or not?
We rolled the curve bones, definitely, but, uh, the, uh, perforated ones, whatever you wanna call them, we probably got enough for half the year. So it'll be good until July, August, something like that. So like the biggest number on that one is nine A and we, and we have put two culverts in on that one. That's, so that's probably a lot of big portion of that. We did some spot grabbing. Oh, that's eighty, sorry, and that's, that's the one that we did put the culvert in on the, by the, by the Australian line? On nine, that one? And that gets expensive as long as we do the gravel project. Remember I mean culvert projects? Crack sealant, you can see that's kind of what we actually spend on.
Well, the, the crack sealing projects cost a lot just simply depending on where they're at in the county, cause we're running from, running from Devil's Lake to grab oil, but to, all the way up to nine.
Right.
Costs a lot of money to get out there.
Three pieces of equipment. And then the last page is, uh, our projects that we have. Like our bridge removals and chip sealant project. Just more for, uh, information and anything, that's what costs for. Bridge removals. And if you think you know what to look at or whatever, anytime you have a question, just feel free to contact me.
Like Commissioner Whiteblond said, they're very handy to have, you know, you wanna create an invasion of.
I, I think it's, like what we're talking about, the, the, the need to keep that additional, I, I, I mean. You just add up the line items on what we put in roads every year and it's, it's a pretty tremendous amount of money just to try to keep our road system in decent condition.
That's what we're supposed to do, right?
It won't. But I mean, in a non-paving year, it's a million and a half bucks. Just to do gravel and just to, just to do maintenance, culverts and everything else to keep the system in decent shape. It's a lot of money.
Yes. But they're needed.
Yeah. No question.
So we do figure the wages into those lots too, so just say no wages are figured out. All I have on this year is something.
Let you guys know that on the, of having four box culverts. We probably have to have a list data next year, that's probably moved to the, all day okay as well. Well, it'll, absolutely next year for instruction on that. That's moved today.
So everybody understand that rather than, we've got new culvert box culvert this year, it'll be in twenty-three, so.
No, it's because they, they're just so backed up trying to, trying to do the mold.
No, yeah, I mean, if it were, if you opened it, if they had middle week day, it'd probably still be, the, the, the provider should just back down. Shouldn't have thrown it this way.
All the bridges been there for sixty years, one more year is probably, that was like every.
All of a sudden, maybe you feel lucky.
Anything else for us?
That's all I have.
Okay, well then let's go to the water board, thank you Gavin.
Well, the water board has been pretty quiet so far. I've been not seeing anything that's come in for us to work on right now, other than a couple of complaints that we have, uh, that have been ongoing, ones that have been up over the years, we have to. Figure out a way to deal with them, but. As far as our biggest things that we have on our radar right now is, uh, that Edmore Cooley or currently Tony Ten project that's, uh, been talked about ever since, uh. Edmore Cooley assessment was voted down. Uh, there's really no new information on that right now, most of the guys that are interested in it are spending the winter down south, so. Don't expect to hear a lot until everybody starts showing back up here pretty soon. So. Now, as far as the board is concerned, the project is out there, but until they bring it to us, uh, with a petition, there's nothing for us to work with, so. Just kind of waiting and seeing what, uh, uh, people involved, they're going to do with it. That's the other thing, you know, hiring our new office manager Stacy. She's been, uh, coming on board pretty quick, the more she digs into stuff, getting the computer set up, the more questions. Um, you know, the way things were done and how it should be done better are coming up, so we're dealing with that hopefully in another month or two, we've got. Definitely our office into a lot better shape than it was. That's, uh, until you know which questions to ask, you didn't know what problems you have. But, uh, she's able to do them all, so that's, uh, been a pretty big thing for us, I think, so. Glad we called her, but we did. Um, other than that, they're probably the one thing that'll might affect our budget during something in the future, talking with Jeff, uh. You know, we do the stream crossing standards for Kevin, uh, they have culverts and crossings. Uh, it doesn't sound like the state is able to, uh, get them done timely anymore. So I know we have a couple in progress that we hope, uh, get back before Kevin needs them, but, uh. As we've talked in the past, we may need to start having those done privately through the board, uh, rather with KLJ or somebody, so. Most, guess we'll be talking about that as the season goes through this year and see if the state gets in better shape, but. I don't anticipate them being able to do them tightly like they have in the past, so. So we'll talk about that as the year goes on, but. Uh, probably the last thing is, uh, you know, where everybody was dealing with the COVID policies and all that, uh. First thing after we got Stacy on board was she was out for a week. Uh, by close contact, so we were working on getting the office set up so that she can work remotely. Which I think is the thing no matter what, just from everything that happens, it'll probably happen in the future. One thing we found out when doing that is the phone lines here in the courthouse are a little bit vacuumed. To be able to have a call come in and transfer it out to somebody working remotely. So there are ways to deal with that and obviously, there's some are better than others, but I guess I would encourage you guys to consider updating the courthouse if it. Came up in discussion and fit into a budget someplace, uh, update phone lines here would probably help everybody that's here out a little bit. Well, that's really about all I have, so if there are any questions or.
Any questions?
No.
The Edmore project got voted down?
Uh, last year, the Edmore project, it got voted down, uh, then, uh, the guys up there are still, you know, some are well in favor, but some are lukewarm. I think there, the board could have probably handled it a little better, with a better person in the office, I think it would have went better. Uh, I guess some.
Just as far as the information getting out.
Right, I think that's a lot of it, there's a lot of questions that people weren't able to get answered, uh, you know, people, a lot of assumptions were floating around out in the countryside. And having this extra time, I think is probably good for it, uh, a lot of people are thinking about it a little differently. You know, some of the stuff that was never mentioned is guys in the middle say, well, you know, this water doesn't affect us, why should we go for it? Well, uh, one thing we could ask is how much has affected Kevin's budget over the year of having to have county eight, uh, the underwater water, having to fix culverts all the time? That's what we're trying to fix with this project is get an orderly flow of water so you don't get water backing up because of cattails someplace and then, you know, fire got high enough, it's all coming. We can get a orderly flow where the local water leaves and the stuff comes from the north. You can feel a lot more water too if it flows over two weeks versus a little one week period, so. So we might ask Kevin to dig in, some numbers we can use. I don't know if it's something that's easy to find, but I guess that's, when it, if it comes up for a vote again, we plan to have a lot more information out there and try to bring out some of these other things that. Everybody looks at how it affects their own pocketbook, but they forget about, you know, what do they cost them on the highway that's closed for two weeks, what do they cost to drive around an extra forty miles? So hopefully we can bring in, you know, if they bring us a project, we can. Put together a whole package for people to understand and see what it costs everybody, not just, you know, your, what they're gonna be paying themselves for the assessment.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, well then we'll move on to unfinished business, uh, and go into ARPA discussion. Committee met again, what was that, week, didn't happen, no?
Friday following or last week?
Yeah. Um, and, uh, we talked about what our plan was going forward. Uh, and then late last week, I was able to get out, uh, some materials, did you get those?
Yep, they look good.
Uh, like a one-page description of what we're looking for, uh, as well as the actual application, uh, form for receiving ARPA. Uh, well, consideration in front of the committee. Um, so I'll keep everybody apprised as, as, uh, any applications start coming in, I'm gonna work with Steve tomorrow to get it up on the county website. Uh, and then talk about it during coffee time, that sort of thing, so. We'll hopefully start seeing, uh, some proposals come in and let you know, and what's going on with that? I don't think I forget anything.
Uh, August thirty-one deadline?
August thirty-one deadline.
And then we'll meet after that, hopefully have the proposals to the commission depending on date, either first or second meeting, it's just gonna repeat that process.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. We'll, uh, keep everybody informed as we go along, but we're expecting quite a few applicants, so it'd be interesting to, to go through that and see what we get. Any questions on ARPA? Okay, then we'll move on to discussion on compensation study, uh, do you have anything for us?
I don't know if I have much more to add other than the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, I mean, it basically comes down to.
What another one was for?
Right, right. Just, um, I guess a few points really is, you know, like we've all seen where the, um. What the environment is right now with the labor market and people, they call it great resignation, what's happening right now, a lot of people are changing jobs. Although I just read an article where seventy percent of people are. Are saying they made the wrong decision, they could hear when the green pastures, so maybe that is covered a little. And then I did a survey from an outside entity, you know, a third party. You would think you probably wouldn't have any, uh, conflict within, people knowing that, you know, somebody can do the compensation. Again, it's down to your game, obviously.
What was that price tag again?
Twenty-six thousand.
Do you think it's needed?
When you look at the county's turnover, it doesn't show that it's really needed, but that can sure turn a dime. You know, it's, it's been up for discussion, you know, since I've gotten here, that's fair. Could be mixed, we have it a whole that.
The old crystal ball?
It's the law.
Like you say, we haven't had much turnover. Pretty limited.
Or better package, I mean, it's, it's outweighs most private sector employers, I mean, so.
So you think that's new?
I don't like that the price tag is as high as it is, but at the same time, if it's something we only do every five to seven years. You break it down that way, on top of the fact that our total payroll in a year is. Oh, I don't even know what our total payroll is, it's gotta be multi-million dollars. Twenty-six thousand dollars over a five or seven year span is peanuts to make sure we're paying people right, I guess, is how I look at it. I, I still don't like the fact that it's as expensive as it is, but I think it's beneficial to make sure that. Cause I've, you know, since I was chair three years ago or whatever, I had multiple questions about when are we gonna, you know, people ask thinking they need to, you know, that we weren't in the market necessarily.
Right.
And, you know, when are we gonna do a salary study, cause I think that that's gonna show that my, uh, position is worthy and everything, and I, I didn't have a leg to stand on at that point with many of us other than to say, well, like. We think we're in the right place, but we don't know for sure. At least this would give us something to stand on.
Well, and ultimately, I think it's all was fair also, you know, to make sure that we're. You know, sort of within reason, I guess I, from my perspective, I'm not opposed to opening Pandora's box or kicking the hornet's nest or whatever metaphor you want, but I agree with Adam, it is, it is a fairly shocking price tag, but I don't think it'll ever get cheaper, so.
Brian, do they come in the building and do it?
Most of the, they won't be in the building.
They won't come here?
No, a lot of it'll be them reaching out to, you know, other counties, other sectors. Um, to pre, give the presentation, it would come up for a cost, obviously. But we can always, you know, when it comes down to the final, you can always phone them there or whatever, but.
You see the fear of them coming in and saying that we're.
Yeah.
Way behind and then all of a sudden this traps us. You know, could we create where we don't have anybody leaving now? But we do the study and all of a sudden it's like, huh. I, I don't know, you know, you're kind of, I agree with you, it's gotta be, but we fair, but.
And in the past, we wanted to, you know, compare this company with other counties of similar size. Not CAFS and Grand Forks and whatever you want, let's not go there.
And, yeah, they won't go there.
You sure?
My positive.
I turned a lot of direction last time to stay away from that, I know that.
Yeah, that's. No, they, they specifically said that they stay away from them.
I, I, I understand where you're coming from with that, but I think the argument could be made that we actually have a higher cost of living here comparatively to CAFS or early year, I mean, there's a reason why. We're paying a, like when the sheriff was in here last time, our starting deputies forty-two thousand, but that account is forty-seven or forty-eight because they got, they gotta get people.
Right.
So the argument could be made that Fargo can, or CAFS can pay less than us because there's all kinds of people that wanna go to Fargo.
Their jail is way behind us.
No, I know they are, I'm just saying that the argument can be made both ways, I, I agree though that we should be compared to places like. Maybe Barnes and Stutzman and Walsh and, you know, things of that nature that are comparable to us.
I understand, Adam, when you say we spread it over five, seven years or whatever, that's fine, but is this year the right year to do it when people just don't come out of the house and go to work? I mean, they don't. There's just numerous, even in our own community, that people stay home, they can make it. I don't know, do we wanna look at that, I don't know. If you're gonna spread it over five or seven years, I ain't that good.
Well, I think, I think the hardest part about this discussion really is like, you know, if, if you were in the mode, and I'm not suggesting we do this, if you were in the mode where you did a salary study every year. You wouldn't be scared about what you're gonna find, cause it's probably pretty substantially similar to what you did before, it's when you get these wider and wider and wider gulf sometime. Then you go, oh my gosh, what happens if we look? You don't wanna, you don't wanna look in the freezer anymore.
People are leaving, yeah, but.
One of my fears is, I, I agree with you guys as far as you have to prepare. But what happens if we lose these ten men? We can't convince the people. Are we gonna put ourselves in trouble? I don't know, but do we wait?
Let's put it off, see how that goes.
Do we wait to see, okay, we let this go through and it, and it goes our way, you know, like, hey, it's good, and then we come back and do the study?
We can do it anytime.
Sure. What do you think of that, Adam? Or do you, you know, I, I totally see where you guys are going with, yeah, we need to do the study.
We're already two and a half months.
But is it the right time?
Only two and a half months from the vote, so. We can wait that long.
I think we can wait, it's just a matter of, you know, if, if, uh, if, if, if we do that, we're basically saying that we're not gonna be using the protections, but it'll be for the fall of the year. And then if it doesn't happen, then, and say we, we can't inform the public and get it passed, then okay, then are we talking after November, are we talking twenty-twenty-four, are we, I mean. You know, we get a, if we kind of stop, oh shit, that would, that would longer, or even, which I'm not saying that's good and or bad, but that's just the math that goes into it, I guess.
So is this company that you have here, is this the only one that can do the study?
Twenty-six thousand. Research, that's, they're it. What are all the other counties they're using?
Yeah, unless you actually know if he's just using, other counties he's using.
There's some, been some counties in North Dakota that used it?
Definitely.
If there's, that, on that list, it's probably what, eight or ten?
Really, early, Kenzie, Montreal, Richland, Sargent, Ward, and then Association of County.
But I think we'll get good numbers from them, they'll be, you know, they'll be at or anything of that nature, but it's just a matter of is it the right time to do it or?
And they, they look at job descriptions, you know, to make sure that they're apples, apples versus.
Have you worked with one of these outfits before?
No.
Have you reached out to the counties or not?
Um, I've talked to a few, um. Jeff, have you talked to some? Uh, I've talked to a few, there was one that they didn't like what they saw in it, but I got out of it was, they worked with a lot of line, they thought with the, the wages. And you just sense that it would happen, but.
And that's kind of the opinions that I got from the commissioners that I spoke with is that. Uh, some were pleased with the outcomes. And, uh, those that were not had, it was because their salaries were way below what, what the study came back at.
But, I mean, my question was, did they wait a long period of time?
Yeah.
Were they out fifteen years before they did the study?
They kind of trapped themselves too, we don't know that, you know, we don't have.
Some of them were oil-producing counties that needed it done. Because of the, the high wages that private sector was commanding out there. Others just did it because it hadn't been done in quite a while, kinda like the position we're in.
When was the last time we did it? Seven, eight years ago?
I can't even remember, I thought it was.
We never used it, you know, people in the resource did it.
So I guess, from my perspective, I, I see two ways going about this, we don't wanna do it now, I mean, we, we can either. Give, give the authority to do it, or I think we should agree tonight that it's put in a budget for next year at the very least. You know, the new charge budget, one of the two, because I don't, I just don't want it to be kicked to an indeterminable amount of time in the future and doesn't get done.
Yeah, can we put it in the budget at least, we know it's not gonna, not moving.
Yeah.
Hey, and, and this isn't anything that you had within your budget for this year, this, this dollar amount? This would come out of. Something out of general, yeah.
Oh, you got COVID dollars in there.
No, it's left on that.
Still quite.
What happened? Come on, Candy, you figured it out.
So I guess, from my perspective, the right answer is to do a salary study, I guess I'm, I'm fairly agnostic on whether to do it. Now I use general, under COVID dollars, or we instruct, Mr. Singer put it in his budget for next year, just with the understanding that it's gonna put us back here, obviously. I just don't, I don't wanna keep discussing it and not kind of do the project.
Not in your budget. Right?
I'll give up my salary this time.
Thank you.
I was, I don't care.
Wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion, let me do everything, just, just to see where we go.
Right, right now?
Yes.
General fund dollars?
COVID, where we can buy.
COVID, general. Sounds good, make it extra complicated.
Let Candy go up here. We'll let, which one we. We'll let Candy figure out where it's coming from with that.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion is carried. I think so, that was, that was a nay.
That was a nay, okay.
Excellent. Just wanted to make sure this is. Okay, well then I'll look forward to hearing what comes of all that. You have anything else, Chris, Brian?
I do not.
Okay, well then we can move on from unfinished business to new business. And Mr. Weigle?
Yes. I'm Larry Weigle. With me is Jason Elder. We're here representing the Lake Region Sportsmen's Club of Devils Lake. If you're not familiar who are, who we are or what we do. We're a local organization. We're not affiliated with any state or federal organizations. We have about twelve active members. And we do things for the youth in the Lake Region. Some of the projects we do is we work with Simeon, the shooting sports thing, we give them some money when we have it available. We do the phaser release and that kinda thing, but all our interest, all our work, all our funds, Devils Lake area. That's where we do all our work and spend our money. But anyway, in our January meeting, we were approached by an elderly that's a resident that even tied about to lift the fishing pond at Ruger Park. So we kicked it around a little bit and we thought this is a fantastic idea. I mean, these guys could walk there and go fishing. If they aren't able to walk, you know, at the river on driving, it's a two block ride on the bus. If they want to go fishing, it wouldn't have to be climbing the rocks. Slipping, going on the steep ramps, that kinda thing. Plus, I think a big benefit for the youth, ride their bikes over there. Pass the line a couple times, parents wouldn't have to worry about going south of Walmart, getting lost in the gravel road or going behind the hike and who knows what could happen. So we, we thought it was a great idea, pursued the city about this, talked to the city engineer. He thought it was an excellent idea, get some contacts with Game and Fish. He, uh, visited the Lake Access Committee, Park Board. And we'd had about three of these Google meets over the phone, front of your computer. Game and Fish had three people on the call. Last, like I said, Suzie was on there, Terry Wallace, Mike Graff's guy, myself. And everybody's thinking this is a good idea. It's a good community project. The Game and Fish. Showed us some diagrams, some designs and some ponds that they've completed throughout North Dakota through the years. And they said to do this the right way, the pond needs to be nine feet deep. That way it's not a big cap tail slough. So we went on to drill some holes, throw in some backslars and we're four and a half feet on here, so it'd have to be dug out to do this. And with the people that are on board with this, Game and Fish, they'll commit forty five thousand dollars to this project. City has committed thirty thousand. Park Board is committed about the same amount, thirty thousand dollars. None of this has gone out to bid yet. Um, the big expense probably is gonna be when these long armed back goes in there to dig that out. Um, we have some contacts with the National Guard, but maybe if they had a piece of equipment like that out west of nineteen, I mean, they could immediately do this project. But that's not for sure yet. So I guess what we're doing here tonight is, is we're wondering if the county wanna be a participant in this program if we're short cash. This was, this comes to a bid. I'm probably gonna be in that meeting with everybody else and they're gonna point their finger at me and says, can you come up with the money that we're short here? So we're gonna have to try to find the money and people always ask, are the grants available? Some of that kinda funding, those take time. We have all this momentum now. We have all this money committed. If you do the grant process, we're gonna be into next year and we're afraid we're gonna lose some of this momentum. Game and Fish could say, we had this money earmarked for your last year. You can come and get it. We give it to somebody else. If we can't hit it, city's on board with their commitments. They're gonna have some changes at the board level of the city. Um, we don't wanna slow this down. We think this project is gonna be done by the end of the summer. If it's late summer, we probably won't stock fish this year. Game and Fish has committed to stocking bluegills, bringing them in from Woodlake. And keeping the pond stocked every year. Uh, some of the things they required was, um, access to the ton of the truck. City's committed that they got a crew coming in, do some street overlay, that they would beef up that area where the truck come back into. City would do a lot of the riprap work that needs to be done. They have the equipment, they got manpower. They would do that, kinda save on the expenses. So. I guess what I'm here to ask is, is the county willing to participate? And if you are, do you have a dollar off that you think you could contribute?
Do you have bids coming in, I'm just at all? Anybody in particular that's gonna bid or not?
My answer is gonna do that, um, because it's gonna have to bid because of the dollar value that's out here. But right now you're thinking maybe the most expensive part is was gonna be that, get a contractor with that backhoe. Who's gonna see, like I said, if you get the garage to do it. Otherwise it's draining, supposedly going over the way of the backhoe. That's just, that's something he's working on right now. But with the Game and Fish commitment, that kinda surprised me a little bit. And the city being on board, the community, it's been on the news, you've probably heard about it on the news. I've been approached on the street and they think this is a good project that we've taken on since our annual pheasant release that we do for the youth hunters. Community's excited. Think it's gonna get a lot of use. Ruger Park's a busy place. People coming in, bringing kids in swimming, they could fish. They're in town doing family picnics, reunions, another auction, you know, take the kids fishing. Do you like the idea? Question.
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
I, I'm the state's attorney, Bo Cummings. I'm not a commissioner, but I'm making policy. Do you know if it's got any kind of federal protection? It's not like a wildlife refuge or flyway.
No, it's not the way you're gonna. The wildlife portion of that, you know, is, is on the north side of that gravel road that goes by Midco. That, I understand is what we've been told is that wildlife isn't tuned, but the park, no.
Okay, that's where the question springs from.
I think if there was a wildlife, I don't think Game and Fish would believe it.
Yeah, they wouldn't even touch a problem.
And again, they run off.
Pretty safe.
I'm pretty sure they wouldn't even pay to hit.
I think it's a good project.
Oh, it's a great op, great project. Yeah, I think it's a great idea too. When, when do you intend to start taking bids?
Can I give you an answer on that? I don't, I know Mike is working on that. There's gonna be some stuff yet that we need to meet with Game and Fish on that, cause they've got some rules with the money that's attached to this to kinda do it their way. Once bids come in, we're gonna have roundtable discussion like this with all the parties that are involved. You're gonna be in this and one of your commissioners would be more than welcome to sit down. One of you guys in the access committee?
Right here.
Were you at the meeting when that was discussed like a month ago? Okay, alright, so.
I like the idea of it.
Probably invite you to come sit, sit in on that.
Only thing is I wish we had bid, so that if you're.
Are you gonna do it, right? National Park can do that, right? Sure. We pretty far up the pole.
I'm not gonna say that, cause like it's.
No.
We don't know that they can commit to that either, but I was just saying that we threw out there and go, that was.
It's very possible, but I don't know if they'd be all in it or something.
Right.
Does Mike have any estimate of what he thinks it might cost?
That hundred thousand number pops up, that's a project Game and Fish have done throughout the state the last few years.
Of this kinda built with a ballpark.
Yep, and we're talking like a pier, I don't know what that pier is.
And we've got a hundred thousand in it right now.
Right, yeah. There needs, needs some work with maybe the parking lot area, um, making all that safe. Um, there was some discussion about bathrooms, uh, but. We like, we got momentum, as I said, we wanna grow with this thing, you know, and they come to us and say, uh, sportsmen, uh, do we need twenty grand out of you? Well. They never said, we're, I think this is raising that kinda money, but so I'm not saying it can't be done.
Ongoing, ongoing expenses. How are those gonna be divvied out? Is this, this park board's taken all of it? They're willing to do that?
Well, the conference calls I've been involved with. Um, the question was brought up, where's the money gonna get funneled through? And it sounds like being this park board property is gonna get funneled through the park.
No, that, that makes perfect sense to me. I was just making sure that we weren't like on the path to a joint powers agreement.
Well, that's gonna be a surprise.
And then Game and Fish is gonna stock it every year out of their.
Every year, yeah.
Basically, if, if, if we could, there might be some ongoing costs that maybe cleaning or drip wrap work or something like that, maybe.
Sounds like the city's willing to undertake all that. They got the equipment and like, uh. Mike was at our last meetings, is they got people coming in to do this overlay on some asphalt, maybe to beef up the area where the fish still have to cross the road to get there and. We like the idea and I think the community, everybody that's helped me on the street about that, they like the idea.
I like the idea. Couple of questions.
If I can answer, I will.
Okay. Um, bluegill, are they native to, uh, Devils Lake?
I don't think there's bluegill in Devils Lake.
No.
So the, the east ditch that flows.
Yep.
Behind the cemetery would have dumps into Devils Lake. And I think the overflow from that pond would go into that east ditch.
Yep.
So. Hey, I, uh, do you have an issue when Game and Fish comes and puts not native species into a, into a body of water, it creates some issues? Uh, the, when you're discussing it with the city, did they have any concerns over, um, putting larbside? In the pond? Do they do that now to control mosquitoes?
That has not been brought up in any of the conversations.
So I asked a question with Mike, the same question.
Yep.
He said that if they dig up the cat tail, that'd actually help control it.
So you're gonna say if, if there's no cat tails and the water's deep enough and it can move, it should be okay, I would think. And once you go nine feet or more, cat tail, kinda this.
Well, uh, that and the, the fish eat any larvae. I, I would suspect, I mean, that's a food source for the fish and that's why you don't wanna poison them. So, um.
Okay, the discussion was that it need to be stocked annually, cause they'll probably winter kill whatever survivors are and probably get fished up. We're gonna encourage signage that says, um. Catch and release encouraged or something like that.
I think they have one of these, uh, the park in, in Damonstown, and I think it's a pretty good hit if I.
Yeah, um.
They know they have, they have one that landed, it's a trout pond. And that just, pretty consistent.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great idea, um.
Well, by, by making a commitment tonight, we're not saying that we're giving the money. We're just saying we'll go up to a certain level and then see what happens with the bid and everything else, right?
That's, that's, that's all I'm asking for tonight. Like I said, I don't have my homework done. I don't, I can't come up with a dollar value. This is it. It's gonna be two, twenty thousand dollars if it's already committed. We don't know that. It might come in under.
And the reason we came so early was to keep the ball rolling if it gets going real fast.
I, I think it's probably safer for this body to say that we're committed to helping and without giving a specific dollar amount, none of the dollar amounts you just talked about scare me.
No.
So, you know, without giving you a specific commitment, I'd just like to see what the bid comes in at.
Well, that's fair, because I wasn't looking for an exact dollar either. I just wanted, you're just here to cover a max, I guess, in case this thing comes in a little bit hard to be thought. I happen to know the local board that might be able to help you out.
I looked into this for you guys already.
Oh, thank you.
Very, Lake Region Community Funds.
We checked, we're looking at that. They might buy the pier or something like that.
Well, they're coming out with theirs for twenty twenty three. And just cause it's twenty twenty three money doesn't mean that you can't be on it. But I would definitely, cause they raised ninety thousand dollars already, so there's gonna be available funds, not that you can get ninety thousand, we might need ten.
Yep.
So.
Is that the one that Sean is?
Yep, so make sure you get, the applications are gonna be coming out. He made it sound like next month, but I'd be watching on there so that you get it, get in right away.
And the other thing is, is if you're willing to wait for some of this until next year, you can always apply for ARBA funds as well. We, we get ARBA funding that we're gonna pay project proposals for, to do them. So. The only thing is, as we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that's not gonna be awarded until August, well, September probably.
We'd like to strike when the iron's hot.
Well, no, I, I completely, I completely understand and, and that's why I was saying, I think, you know, as a county, we're willing to look at what we can offer, but I don't think there's any problem, but I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, if the bids come in, it's something we absolutely can't afford and we can't raise the ARBA process, we're gonna have to go through the grant process and, you know.
I think that's why we're all kinda sitting here, because let's say the bid comes in, you're saying a hundred thousand, say it comes in a hundred fifty five thousand and you're twenty thousand, I mean, don't.
Yep.
And all of a sudden we come up and say, hey, yeah, we're gonna help you out to get there, instead of telling you an amount and then you still can't get there.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for an amount. I was just looking more or less for a commitment than the need to be able to come and see what we do.
I don't even question if it comes in in that ballpark.
Yeah.
That thirty thousand dollar range doesn't scare me at all either. I think it's a good project, so.
I think it's a great project.
Get some bids and.
Yeah.
Well.
Keep it simple and keep it simple.
Oh, we will. We will. Is there anybody in particular? Should I contact you with what's going on? I think you're in the.
I'm cool.
Lake Access and you're probably sitting here on the meeting while you're having face to face, you know, with Game and Fish people.
And I'd be great, and I can keep you getting a farm draft.
Yep, yep, yep. I wanna take up your time here for me.
Yeah, I'll cool with that.
Yeah, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, thank you for bringing, you know, interesting ideas.
Oh, we're always open to ideas.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Bidders and delegations. Anybody else here who wants to, uh, talk to us, but I mean. No? Okay, then we'll go to portfolios and we will start with Commissioner Brown.
I talked to the sheriff and our military at the jail today and they've gone good, increased their staff up to fourteen and. Looking good. Captain's working out here.
Good, very good.
Are they pretty positive? On changing mail, they don't need to.
Appreciate it. Any other?
Good, hold on, good.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, well, we've been in the, the news recently with the airport, trying to keep everybody, uh, informed on what's going on there. Um, and you know, it's not the, the death sentence that, you know, when we first got that notice of termination. Or the termination of, of services from SkyWest, you know, we've kinda took a step back and. Yes, it's bad, but it's not quite as bad as it sounded, um, initially. And yes, SkyWest is, uh. Wants to pull out of twenty nine essential service airports, uh, throughout the region, throughout their, their, uh. Their service contract. They, uh, they are under contract though with the federal government through the essential air contract. And we have them under contract till June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. That doesn't mean that we're not gonna be looking for a new carrier though. Um, the DOT is putting out requests for proposals right now for carriers to come in and service Devils Lake, Jamestown. Those are the two airports that lost, um, the essential service contract with, with, uh, SkyWest. Um, so we still, uh, plan on moving ahead with our terminal expansion with the ARBA money that the, the airport received. Um, we have a lot of irons in the fire out there with, uh, Abron Way and Taxi Way, although that bid came in. Uh, fifty one percent higher than what, uh, engineer estimate was, so we decided to put that, um, off. And, uh, but there's other expansion projects out there that we will be bidding soon. Um, our, our SRE, uh, fire support building will be expanded. Um, terminal will be expanded, um, you know, roughly thirteen million dollars worth of, of, uh, improvements out at the airport within the next three years, four years. Um, similar to the timeframe that we have with the counties, our the money, we have to have it spent by twenty twenty six, so. But, uh, we'll be moving ahead with that and, um. So, but yeah, we will be looking for a new carrier to serve the Devils Lake Airport. But we will not be without one, um, which is good news. So. Hey, you know, the, the news, we were kind of a little crazy last Wednesday night. We had a, a meeting, a Zoom meeting with, um, the folks from SkyWest and. They, uh, hemmed and hawed and dropped the ball on us and said, by the way, uh. And, you know, if they're correct and it's a truly a pilot shortage issue that is causing their, uh. Them to wanna pull out of their essential service contracts, um, that's probably a, an industry wide issue and we may have difficulty finding out. A carrier, but like I said, that's a, a federal, uh, Department of Transportation issue and they'll be putting out requests for proposals and. Hopefully we get, uh, a carrier in here that, uh, has a similar sized jet. We don't wanna go backwards and go to a, a single prop plant or a terrible prop or. Billy Bob's puddle butt jumper or something like that, so. Um, we wanna continue to move forward in a positive way and, and, uh. And, you know, this is just a hiccup in the, in the road.
I'll tell my uncle not to bring the flight service back into passenger.
I was gonna say, you could strap to the wings as. I was going to say, he gets strapped to the wings of the straight plane.
Well, hey, and I think with with the enhancements that we're doing and the enhancements that Jameson's done previously. I think that the carrier would want to come in to serve Devils Lake Jameson, you know, did Jameson's, you know, has good pasture numbers, Devils Lake. Has consistent, steady, good pasture numbers, we'd like, obviously like to see those increase and with their, a good carrier, I think you could, so.
Absolutely.
Got a lot of things going for the airport out there, so.
It'll be interesting to see what comes of all of that. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Weigle?
I don't have a whole heck of a lot, um. I've got four Devils Lake and Social Services tomorrow, so I haven't, we haven't met since our last meeting. Library Board, we met, um, we are looking at adding, uh, a couple more board members. Um, because we were short board members the whole time, uh, so, uh, one of them will have to be appointed by the city and then one of our county appointments. Uh, Sawyer, uh, said that he, he hasn't been able to make meetings, it's been very difficult for him, so he's going to, we're going to have to have him tender his resignation so that we can reappoint somebody that says it hasn't worked for him very long. Uh, and he was fine with that, he had already said that that's what he wanted to do, so look for that in a coming meeting, that will be, we had a couple of people that, uh, applied. Uh, so we have people that would be more than happy to fill the positions, so we'll have a name hopefully at the next meeting. Housing Authority, um, we met, uh, we're trying to get, uh, work through the process of, uh. That's been kind of a pain, we've talked about that before, the funding and everything like that, um, but the money's there, but you have to go through a process to release money on the, on the funding, so. Tim's working through that process with the staff, we're fully staffed, which is fantastic. And hoping that, you know, our, our occupancy rate has been kind of slowly trending down, so we're hoping we can get some people moved in when spring starts here, because nobody wants to move when it's forty below. So we're hoping we can get some, get some people in the, in the apartments and fill up completely, but. Who's to come on that here, other than that, that's all I got.
Um, Recorder's Office, they converted back to nineteen seventy five from three months, so that's going well. In that office in, in Brune.
That's digitization.
Yep, digitization. Uh, Treasurer's Office, they're over ninety percent as far as the money collected on the taxes. And, uh, the money market, as I can see, it looks good. You agree with that?
Yes.
And then she said that if we want to have the burn on land, we need to come back in. They would do that, we just got to get them a couple of weeks, you know, in advance, so it's something we want, when we come back.
Was was that about July, August that we did that last year?
I was going to say, probably a yearly update.
Well, and I think we even discussed that with them at the time when we were agreeing with them, they come in.
I think Tom has got a yearly update.
But yeah, so I think that would be a good idea to have them, uh, either our jig or July.
Or maybe.
And then the third board in Lake Actually, we did not get it coming out.
Very good, very good.
Oh, yeah.
I'll keep mine short and sweet, the only thing that I have is, uh, I know that District Health interviewed five candidates, uh, to become the next administrator of, or eighteen applicants. Quite a few. They did, did five interviews last week, so I expect an announcement.
Actually, two last week, they were on today.
What was it?
And one next Tuesday.
Well, then I must waiver. So it's still in the process and.
But they, they.
They haven't had a decision by the end of next.
Just glad there's good qualified candidates, they're interested.
Yeah, that's all I have, anything else for the good of the order, any other announcements or anything? Hearing none. We're adjourned, thank you all very much.
You have a voice.